The question is about the staff's recommendations, the planning staff's recommendations that were made a couple of weeks ago for the Royal Crescent. Whether you support them, why or why not? And if not, what changes you might support, if any?
I'm not a Mason, and I don't support this plan either. For the same reason that I don't support the bonds with the process in which it was done. We had 20 years' notice that the Royal Crescent ordinance was going to expire. And we didn't do the proper planning on it. We didn't do the proper studying. So the planning staff gave us, I believe it was 10 different alternatives. But the biggest problem with that is that eight of those 10 alternatives presumed that the Royal Crescent was history, that it was not going to be renewed. We haven't made that determination. We haven't asked the people who live in the Royal Crescent what they want. They overwhelm the majority of people in the Royal Crescent. What the Royal Crescent preserves? I will preserve the Royal Crescent as it's presented now. And for that reason, I don't agree with the plan, and I would not support it.
So about five years ago, they actually did do a study. It spent $100,000 on it about what to do with the Royal Crescent. And then it just sat gathering dust on the shelf. No one had the backbone to even deal with it or make any kind of political decisions regarding it because everybody considers it the third rail of politics. Now it comes up conveniently in an election year, and it's a big issue in an election year. Tell me how that always happens. You know, for me, the Royal Crescent is a treasure. Agricultural land is wonderful. You know, that said, I'm all for preserving open space, but I don't think we've done it very well up to this point. You know, people will tell you that we've lost 15,000 acres of the Royal Crescent to 10-acre lots. And that's 1,500 homes, buy-ride homes. Those 1,500 homes didn't pay a single dollar in proffers or anything to the school system or the safety or anything. You know, in a normal development, if you put 1,500 homes, you'd pay about $50 million. And so I don't think what we're doing right now is working. You know, I believe that we need to support the rural economy. If there are farmers who want to continue to farm, I think we need to make that easier to do. I think we need to promote agritourism. But I think we have to do it better. I think we need to redo the comprehensive plan. That's something that no one's been willing to do. It's incredibly stale. All we do is fight over land use. And so while I appreciate that the staff did some, you know, some great things, they've had a lot of pushback because no one is willing to say that perhaps we need to do something different to actually preserve our rural layout in the Royal Crescent.
Good evening, candidates. We'll start with Mr. Skogman first. Prince William County continues to grow with a population of over 460,000 residents. 27% of the population being under the age of 18. Schools and transportation make up approximately 88% of the 2020 county budget. How would you propose to expand the tax base to support the current and future needs of schools and transportation in the county?
Okay, I mentioned economic development. I'm sorry. I mentioned economic development as being one of my main interests. I believe in Prince William County, we do need to be more innovative. We can probably take a sample of what some of the other jurisdictions have done. I believe in public-private partnerships. We need to look at perhaps having instead of an economic development department, I think we should have Economic Development Authority that will have more power or more things about to go out and actually search for businesses to come to Prince William County. And also think that we need to put a pin on too much residential development because the residential development is the thing that has really been a drain on some of our resources. So I believe in terms of what would I do? I think Prince William County needs to let everyone know that they're open for business economically. And that's about the best we can do because I'm not in favor of raising taxes. I've talked to many people, and I think property taxes are already a little bit too high when you consider some of the other jurisdictions.
Could you repeat the last part of your question? How would I support?
Sure. The last part of your question would be, how would you propose to expand the tax base to support the current and future needs of schools and transportation in the county?
Support the current tax base by lowering, trying to get the real estate tax rate lower so we can interest businesses that come to Prince William County and bring jobs. When we bring jobs, you employ people, make a living. County revenues will grow. That will reduce your tax burden and improve your quality of life. I think the answer to the question is we have to produce jobs here. We're not. We don't have the jobs here for the bedroom community. Amazon is bringing 125,000 jobs to Alexandria and Arlington. Those people, some of those people may live here, but those jobs aren't coming here. We have to find a better way to bring business here, and that's by reducing the real estate tax rate. I think that was the students that you're talking about is that we bring jobs here. Prince William County is a good.
So budgets are about priorities. You know, if you have a fixed pot, you have to choose what to spend your money on. I would say that over the last 15 years, we've changed the schools. Sometimes at the expense of spending local tax dollars to build our own roads. Chairman Stewart likes to talk about how we're the only candidate that builds our own roads, and everybody else lets the state do it. Well, there's a reason people don't build their own roads. It's because it's very expensive and uses up our debt capacity. And so I really want to make schools a priority. So it's not necessarily increasing the tax base, but it's making the schools a priority within that budget. You know, and the second is economic development. 10 years ago, people were talking about how we had a 73% residential tax base, and we needed to lower it. Well, now it's at like 83%. It's going in the wrong direction. We have failed miserably in bringing commercial businesses or corporate businesses to Prince William County. That is something, you know, economic development is something I want to do. We go out and shop the county to other businesses and try to attract them. I want to create a small business incubator so we can grow and have entrepreneurship and grow some of those businesses here. Like FH R is a great example of that. You know, we need to have more commercial tax base. It's not going to happen right away. But I believe with a different board and different leadership, we can bring the businesses to Prince William County, and we can get the extra tax revenue from those businesses.
If it's a debate, in order to bring it, did we do this just before? Sorry, ma'am. Jumped into it quick. My apologies.
In Prince William County, one of the things, you know, being in the world of the chamber as well, one of the things I mention all the time is when you talk to anybody in DC, Manassas, you get that look on your face, cow country. Because people out there still think that Manassas is something where they are formed. Yes, we are a foreign country, but at the same time, we're a community tech hub. First and foremost, we need to market ourselves. We need to tell people who we are. We need to go out and advertise. Manassas, Prince William County is not just that good old farm boy country. There's a lot of technology in here. We have NOAA, we have GMU that bring a lot of, we have biotech education in both the campuses. We have medical campus coming up from the GMU. That's a huge thing for our community. We need to look at diversification of our investments into different things. Yes, we have residential tax base right now that has to change. Data centers. We are the lowest tax entity across the region. We are one-third of what Loudoun is. And yet, we cannot, we are thinking of reducing more. We are already providing the incentives. We need to create opportunities for them to basically, we need high-speed internet across the county. If we want to bring businesses here, we need to have high-speed internet in the county which can basically actually attract business. Stafford went ahead. We are left behind. Why? Stafford invested in high speed. They attracted businesses to Stafford, and they have grown much faster than we are. We need to go back and redraw the map and go with the internet first.
So I think we're only a few minutes into this debate before transportation came up, which is only natural in Northern Virginia. So we're going to cover some other transportation questions right now. Mr. Gray will answer this question first. If elected chairman, would you work to try to extend metro to Prince William County? Or do you think there's a better way to improve mass transportation?
I'm, excuse me. I'm not in favor of metro coming to Prince William County for a number of reasons. Number one, as I've stated, jobs in Northern Virginia are not here. We haven't done, the county has not done a good job of getting jobs in Prince William County. The way you do that is not by exporting a billion dollars of our economy into Northern Virginia because that's a minimum. That's what's going to require, that's going to be Prince William County's contributions, at least a billion dollars. Where are we going to pay for that? Secondly, we're just going to export the jobs out because the jobs are in Northern Virginia. I've just said before, 125,000 jobs are going through Alexandria and Arlington by itself. Bringing metro here, it's been on the board for at least 20, 25 years. It's been there, is not going to bring jobs here by itself. We have to get the jobs here first. Where's the billion dollars going to come out of? What education program is going to be closed? What road improvements are going to not be, and not happen so that we can put in that billion dollars that's needed? Metro is not the answer. I think we need to improve on BRE, PRTC, and the entities we have now in building that. But I'm not in favor of metro coming to Prince William.
So I'd love to see the blue line come down to Woodbridge. And actually, it may not happen, but if we don't study, it definitely won't happen. It may take 20 years, but we have to start sometime. I was just at a chamber breakfast this morning, listening to Congressman Connolly talk about the blue line to Woodbridge. So we know we have support from our US legislator. I've heard Scott Surable, our state senator, talk about extending the blue line down to Woodbridge or perhaps even to Potomac Mills. So there are people who want to support this, and our current board has decided not to study it at all. They just simply refuse to. I, you know, granted, metro is a mess right now. Let's say, you know, momentarily. But in seven years, if it gets it back together, I'd like to have a shovel-ready project that says, yes, hey, let's extend the metro down to Prince William County. We don't have any metro, which is incredible considering we're the second-largest county in Northern Virginia. And we also need to look at doing bidirectional service on the BRE and fixing Longbridge, which is a constraint going over the river. But these are things that we need to start doing now. They may take 10, 15 years, but if no one ever starts them, yeah, never going to happen. And I plan to start them, so at least it might happen.
2004, 2008, I served on the strategic plan, trust me, strategic planning board. And one of the things that I wanted to put on the plan was metro. And the answer I was given is it's too expensive. Well, 20 years later, it's not that cheap unless somebody tells me otherwise. And if we wait another 20 years, it's going to be impossible. If you go and ask this question with people who built the New York subway system, was it expensive when you built it? The answer will be yes, it was very expensive. But they did. They white the bullet and did it. Today, nobody can build that subway system in New York. So when we look at transportation, one of the biggest things that we need to look at is it is the pain point of the county. The reason Amazon went to Arlington because of a transportation metro house and all that stuff, that allowed people to communicate easily, get to point A to point B. If we want businesses to come to locate to Prince William County, we have to build transportation infrastructure that supports it. It's not people coming out of here. People can come into here as well for jobs, which is again helping the economy. There's a lot of options that we can have. We can improve our bus model transportation. Create small commuter buses that we can go across the town. We can also invest, look at the light trail across the county. You know, you look at Europe. They all mean like anything, and we are here. We are the greatest country in the face of the nation. We are second in many things that the world is ahead of us. Why can't we take those initiatives and be the first in other things as well while the others are leading us?
Okay, I'm in favor of bringing metro to Prince William County. And I would like to say this, no is not a strategy. If everything is no, 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 we'll be where we are 20 and 30 years from now. I've talked to many businesses too, especially some of the small business and meeting-sized businesses. They've mentioned that Prince William County is very, the accessibility of it is really not the greatest. So I think we need to be more strategic. I'm in favor of bringing metro to Prince William County. Of course, we have to study how we're going to do it, but it should be done. I remember 10, 15 years ago, they were talking about bringing metro to Dulles Airport. Now we see where they are. And it makes the area, it makes going to Dulles much more feasible. And I think even for the airplanes that come in or the jets that come in, the hub, it makes it more attractive for other airlines to have their hubs there. So we do, we talk about economic development. If you don't make the county accessible where people can come here and live, then I think that's going to be a problem. And we talk about wanting to expand economic development in terms of eastern part of the county where it is more applicable to be more dense. I think bringing metro would be something we should look at. And also, bus rapid transit could be an option, could be an additional source of making transportation throughout the county better. But we need to study and use imagination and just not say no. Thank you.
This question is for Ms. Wheeler first. You have all identified Route 28 as one of Prince William's major transportation challenges. How would you, as chairman, ensure that this bottleneck is fixed once and for all? And if you do not support the transportation bond referendum, where would you find the money to do so?
Well, I do support the bond referendum to fix Route 28, but the money in the bond referendum is more money than that to fix Route 28. You know, this once again comes about advocating for the county across the state at a state level. You know, we need the influence that says we need the dollars in Prince William County. There are certain things, the way they scale things, smart scale, that Prince William County, because of our density, doesn't support very well. And I think we need our state legislatures, legislators, many of whom I know, to advocate at the state level for funding for certain things like 28. I personally like the idea of a bypass to 28 rather than fixing the road to South and widening. I don't know if anybody's been up and down it, but there are a lot of businesses. You would have to take a lot of businesses, and I mean, I think it would take a lot longer. The Route 28 bypass is already on the books, has already been planned. And I think it's an easier way to go. So I would definitely, I mean, we can't pay for it all ourselves. We'd need state money. But I would immediately start looking at the bypass option and advocating at the state level to get that done with the Department of Transportation.
I would look at 28 basically as a bypass. You know, Dani Barung, our delegate, she has a good plan also on the expansion of 28. I am all for good options. But how feasible are they? That study has to happen fully. And as the study is happening on the bypass, if the bypass does become a reality and we get our required engineers to go ahead and move forward, I would like to move ahead with the bypass. But also, within the bypass, I would also want to look at the public transportation option. You know, when we look at 66 being expanded or 95 being expanded, the state and the, you know, we were able to find a lane in there. We were able to find 1216 feet to expand 9566. Why couldn't we use that same 1216 feet to put a metro down there? You know, when we want to put the right solutions, you know, and here we are traveling to DC every day, paying $20 to $30 each way. Well, the question I have for the citizens in Northern Virginia is if I was asked to pay 1% more in taxes, which might be $2,000 a year, but now I pay $20 on a day, which is almost enough $400, $450 a month I'm paying on tolls, almost $5,000 a year. And I could have had the metro come to DC, come to North, or come to Prince William County, and a better solution. Creativity, innovation is going to be the key for next board. And we need to have a leader who can think outside the box, innovate solutions that can lead us into the 21st century, not doing the good old thing and expecting different results. Thank you.
The question was Route 28. And we already discussed the other about metro. I'm in favor of, you said that, you asked the questions that we were against the transportation bond. I'm in favor of the transportation bond because it does address the Route 28. In addition to that, I also believe we should have a bypass because as soon as you expand or fix Route 28, it's still not going to be a perfect solution. So I think the bypass is something we should consider at the same time while we're dealing with the improvement of Route 28. And I also believe we should look more at bus rack of transit because there are quite a few people that go from Prince William County up into Fairfax to the airport and et cetera. So I think that's another something we should, we could look at. And maybe have a transportation hub someplace in Old Town, Manassas. Or I would think Old Town, Manassas would be a good place to have a transportation hub that goes directly to Dulles Airport. We can have a bus, you can have, you can have parking in that particular area to... Something you didn't mention that I want to just tie into right quick if I have a little bit of minutes. I'm not in favor of building commuter lots every place. I think we should probably look at some commuter garages because at the Horn of Road, there's a proposal to build another commuter lot. I can see that's very expensive land right off of 20th, right off of 95. That could be developed into some, we can do some economic development there in addition to the parking. Thank you.
Tom, can you ask me to repeat the question again?
How would you, as chairman, ensure that Route 28 is fixed once and for all? And you said you do not support the transportation bond referendum. So where would the money come from?
I'm not supporting this current transportation bond issue. I'm all in favor of improving roads and building roads. If not this particular bond referendum, because of the process in which it was done, we absolutely have to fix 28, we know that. Again, half of this new board, at least half that we know are going to be new supervisors. They're going to have to re-study the whole thing all over again. Again, they haven't done traffic, DIA and traffic impact analysis in at least seven years. We don't really know who's using that road. We don't know the components of who's going to help pay for the road. How much is the state going to put in? How much is the federal government? How much is the Northern Virginia transportation going? There's just too many questions to be answered in order to know how that road's going to be fixed. Another significant question is, is it only the bypass and just widening 28? The most expensive part of 28 is buying the land that won't have to take from there. We had a study out seven years ago where they could do reversible lanes for about $21 million and an additional cost of about $500,000 a year. Arlington uses reversible lanes. DC uses reversible lanes. Why aren't we looking at reversal of the lanes? What other options are out there? So that would be my answer on fixing 28 at this point.
Okay, the next question will be for, to start with Mr. Bay. US One in Prince William County is named after a Mississippian who became president of the Confederacy and was later held in Fort Monroe for treason and believed that slavery should be expanded to the territories. If elected chair, will you push to follow what Alexandria, Arlington, and Fairfax counties have done and seek permission from the Commonwealth Transportation Board to rename Jefferson Davis Highway in Prince William County?
I do not support the renaming of anything because history is supposed to be learned from, not forgotten, not erased, not erased. What is happening with the history today? We are erasing it and trying to rewrite it. Tomorrow, somebody else is going to come in and rewrite it all over again. There will be a time where people will not know what our history looked like. We can leverage this opportunity to educate. Why Jefferson Davis? Why Robert E. Stichewell? We can put a plaque next to that statue and tell you what happened really. Our kids need to be educated about what happened in the past. And if we take those moments away of education, there will be no opportunity for to educate them. We need to take every single opportunity that we have at our disposal to make sure that we do not repeat that history again because history does have a tendency to repeat itself. If we don't take the steps today, 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now, we will see history repeated. Somebody else is rewriting the roads because the roads today named did not fit their narrative. And this will keep on going. Sometime, somewhere, this cycle needs to end. We need to learn to live in the railroad and accept what is around us and learn from it and move forward. Thank you.
To answer the specific question, no, I would not be in favor of renaming the road. Be quite honest about it. I wanted to be kind of polite here, but I believe that our political correctness is sort of getting out of hand here. I think we need to more concentrate more on economic development, concentrate on the here about a name of a road. Where's it going to end? You know, there are other roads all over the place that have, that are named after people who may have had unfortunate histories. So I think that we need to just sort of, kind of, as I say, be adults about it and just sort of know that it's history and just not repeat itself. But we need to put all that brain power and all that feel-good type conversation into dealing with economic development and improving our schools. Thank you.
I also would not change the name. Name because, well, it doesn't do, again, as God just said, it doesn't change any history in your desk. It doesn't improve the quality of life. We're sitting here talking about investing $355 million in road improvements that will improve the quality of life. Changing the name of a road will not change anybody's quality of life. We're going to have to spend tens of millions of dollars. Because again, where's this stop? Do we change Garfield to New and Woodbridge Vikings? Stonewall Jackson Leaguers, Patriot High School, Battlefield? Where does it stop? Who makes those decisions? It's not a decision that improves the quality of life in Prince William County that will require tens of millions of dollars that we simply don't have, that we need to spend to adjust the problems we do have to improve our quality of life. That's the question that needs to be asked, the quality of life.
So I will speak differently on this subject. You know, I think it would improve the quality of life for people who live in that area. It's actually a minority area of the county, and it's named Jefferson Davis Highway. Jefferson Davis was the president of the Confederacy and was almost convicted of treason, but they decided not to hold him up to that. But he was a treasonous person to the United States. The road's names came in the 1920s when the DAR, not the DAR, the women of the Confederate soldiers were helping build the roads in the South. And they named it that to honor, you know, their southern heritage because they, you know, it wasn't meant to be a nice thing. You know, the places next to us have changed the road. I can't believe it would cost tens of millions of dollars, but we can always study that. You know, this is a simple thing that we could do. I understand political correctness, but you know, a lot of people find the name of that road offensive. And I think we need to honor that. You know, it's not about erasing history. Roads are there to honor people. That's why we have Kathleen Seafell Highway and some other ones. It's not meant to hold on to someone who really wanted to be a treasonous person to the United States. And I have no problem changing the name of that road.
Mr. Skogman, the next question will begin with you. We often hear people in the business community express concern about whether higher education is turning out graduates ready to step into job shortage areas. How well do you think Prince William County is working with Northern Virginia Community College and George Mason to coordinate education and certification programs with demands in the business community?
I think NOVA is doing a great job working with the school system, but I think we can do better than that. There are many young people that are not attending NOVA that need to be looked at also. I think we need, that's why I said earlier about the trade, tech schools. If we can develop a curriculum, affect a curriculum in the 10th, 11th, 12th grade for young people that are not going to high school, they're not going to, not even going to a community college. So I think we need to look at those individuals. And you can make, you can make a decent salary without a college education, almost as much as you can with a college education. So I think we shouldn't give that area a short shift. But to answer your question, I think we're doing a good job, but we can also, we can always do better or do more. Thank you.
You're next. You're next, Mr. Gray.
I agree. I think NOVA is doing a very good job. And I think the high schools are doing a good job. Our school system in integrating students going, graduating from high school, working in college. I've seen that with plenty of my clients' families, with their students, their children, excuse me, where they're taking their studies in all sorts of subjects. We see the Hackle-Ardent degree program, all the various programs. These are programs for preparing people for college and also preparing people to go to trade schools. I think we are not going to be in trade schools. I would agree that not everyone's good for college. When I was in high school, I didn't even know anything about college. Couldn't afford it, didn't have the graduate, and after I joined the Marine Corps. After I got out of the Marine Corps, that's when I went to college. I was more mature, at least I thought it was. I was more mature, and I was ready to go to college at that point. But I think our schools are doing a fine job in leading the students to either trade schools or go to college. And NOVA is a critical part of that program.
So I believe that Northern Virginia Community College is actually one of the best community colleges in the United States, and we are really lucky to have something like that here in our community. That said, no, by and for all, we need more workforce development in our community. I sat and spoke with someone in workforce development recently, and she, it's trouble. It's having, we have difficulty trying to get people to fill jobs in Prince William County. You know, so the question is how do we better suit ourselves to fill those? You know, I would always say that the county needs to work more closely with the Northern Virginia Community College as well as others in the area to make sure that we're doing the right things that the businesses near us meet. You know, we are doing some great things. They started an aviation program at Stonewall High School and down in Woodbridge. You know, the IBEW down in Manassas, expanding their trade program. You know, so some of those things are starting to come to fruition. But there is a lack of workforce. You know, we are a highly educated community, and we need more of those people to come here to fill the businesses that we do have in our businesses in the Northern Virginia region. And I would love to support anything they would want to do to expand that and, you know, make sure that the county helps them do that.
I am the only candidate in here who is actually involved in the future.
I am the only candidate in here who's actually involved in the future of our children. I'm a proud person to be on the board of George Mason's Science Technology Advisory Board. I'm on the Commonwealth Cyber Security Initiative Board. I'm on the, you know, Kader Technology Engineering Board on the school system and many other boards like that where I am basically actually involved with the kids, how to look at the future. We have thirty-three thousand jobs in cybersecurity today in Northern Virginia that are right here. We are not producing talent enough. Trade schools, any other schools that want to invest in, every school today needs a computer. If you are not teaching the people technology, those kids, technology, five, ten years later, they will be basically kind of trying to struggle what they're doing. Because every single machine, they used to be handsaw, then they used to be the hand tools, are all computerized today. You just put a design in the tool and it does it for you. So a lot of the things that we're doing today, we need to, again, become innovating. We need to look at how the future is moving, how the things are moving forward. If we try to think forty years back, well, guess what? Our kids are not and never going to catch up with those thirty-three thousand missing jobs that are out there today. We need to help our kids to think outside the box and that's what I do on a daily basis. I talk to kids, I bring them on board, I train them in data technologies and get them to see a website making hundreds of dollars plus, uh, a year and enjoying their lives. Thank you.
Okay, the next question will start with Mr. Gray. Mr. Gray, recently, a number of tweets were deleted from your Twitter account, which many believe were racist, homophobic and misogynistic. Given that Prince William County is one of the most diverse counties in the nation, how do you reconcile these tweets with those of us who live, visit and choose to work here? And for the other three candidates, I'd like to know what role Twitter and social media would play in your communication strategy as chair?
I have issued a sincere apology for those tweets, for those retweets. Most of those were retweets. They were in fifteen and sixteen. Looking back with the benefit of hindsight, certainly would agree with what you said. I can recognize that at that time, but if it not occurred, it would be right for office. I didn't delete some of the tweets, I deleted all of the tweets. I didn't do it in a hidden fashion. They were sitting out there since fifteen, sixteen. I, I did it. And then I also disclosed in my campaign financial report the fifteen-dollar charge. Why? Because that is transparent, that's what the law requires. It reported, then suggested that I not report that. And that's not, I've spent forty-six years as a CPA telling clients to tell the truth. I deleted them because they needed to be deleted. I was embarrassed by them and I offered my apologies on them. It was a sincere apology. Sure, people don't like that. They think it's slow. I, I did do that. I gave full ownership of them and I, I don't know what more I could offer except I have offered my apologies on them. And they don't want to support. Some of them are important, there's no question.
So, just to point out, many of your retweets were with comments about the tweets. So there were lots of comments with the retweets, lots of retweets with lots of comments. Um, and you, and to my knowledge, you've taken down your apology off your Facebook page. I, I saw it disappear. I don't know if it's still up there somewhere, but I wasn't able to find it. Um, you know, social media today is, is difficult, but I also know that social media is a way to reach a whole new generation of, of, you know, the people who don't ever pick up a newspaper, don't ever turn on a TV, they stream TV shows. And so the question is, how do you reach all of your constituents? And I think that we're going to need, um, a strategy from the social media standpoint that reaches across all the different mediums, uh, you know, whether that be, uh, paper, email, Facebook, Twitter, uh, some other things that the, the county could use to reach out to these people. I don't think it's going to go away. Electronic communication is the way of the future. The question is today, how do we actually be relevant? You know, I don't know about anybody else here, but I get a hundred emails a day in my inbox and, you know, it's, it's hard to sort through and most of them I, I just ignore. And so, uh, you know, I know that the county is actually already doing things like I get alerts on my phone about all the roads that are always closed and then males get those, the roads are always closed. I'm like, wow, road closures in Prince William County. And I think we need to figure out exactly how we're going to reach the people, especially with the emergency services going forward.
I would love to be in your shoes and for having a hundred emails a day, I get a hundred thousand a day. So, uh, but I have learned to deal with it. Social media, I live on it.